All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. And Addy, you'll take the role, please.
Cobb.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox. Russell.
Here.
Posh.
Here.
Sheets.
Okay, we're going to start the hearing out, and I wanted to reiterate, as long as it works so well for our last public hearing on the budget, to allow counsel, when you have in your add a section where you want to ask a question, please feel free to do so, all right? So with that, I'll give it back to Mr. Unitic.
Okay. Today, we're just going over some of the department's 2026 budgets. The first one is going to be the courts. Hey, Steve, could you move that? It's not going for me. Oh, there you go. Okay, the courts 2026 budget, this is all general fund money. The court has other funds, but that's our own monies, and so we're just talking about general fund monies on this slide. Their personal services is going to be approximately $1.4 million, up slightly from 2025, but that's just due to wage increases and hospitalization increases. The operating expenses is slightly going to drop, which is always a good sign, any time you could drop the operating cost. And then the total departmental budget is going to be approximately $1.5 million for 2026. And the court is asking for no general fund money for capital projects. And the judge is here for any questions.
Yeah, so I want to thank the mayor, members of council. I want to thank you guys for having me. I also, before I get started and answer any questions, I want to thank Andy Unitic and the whole finance department for their assistance in putting this together. They have that unique thing when they deal with me, right? It's a little different than most other department heads. I push back maybe a little more sometimes, being the judge, but they've been super helpful, and I appreciate them assisting in this. I also want to acknowledge and thank Cassandra Jones, who's the clerk of court and court administrator. She makes sure that the court runs, and without her, we wouldn't be able to function. And I want to thank all of my staff, because without them, we would not be able to do what we do. And ultimately, what we do is make sure that we're administering justice fairly and impartially. And so these general fund requests are aimed at that necessary goal. They are, in fact, essential to our function, and that's why these requests are put before you. I also recognize that this is not done in a vacuum. You have a number of other hearings that are set. The court's entire, or the city's entire budget is important. Can you hear me? So I wanted to certainly be here and answer any questions that you might have. A couple of points that I want to make. Every time it is something like this, I make sure that I mention that the court is not a revenue source. That is certainly not our goal, and that's not what we're here to do. That said, the entire time that I've been on the bench for the last seven-plus years, we've operated in the black. So our revenue that we've, that has come in, has exceeded the expenses. I also want to point out a couple of things. As noted by Mr. Unitic, the, this is dealing with the court's general funds, and so those are the funds that the court needs to administer justice. Those are the day-to-day operations of the court, and that's what's included in this budget request. The court, as noted, does have some other funds. For example, we have a special projects fund. There is no legislative oversight on that. That is primarily for, as it indicates, special projects. And so, for example, it's rehabilitation of facilities, building of new facilities, training of judges and staff. So as an example, when I first took office, I moved a number of line items that were in the general fund, that were paying for CLEs and different organizations that the judge was in. I moved those over to special projects, and they remain in special projects. So for example, when I go down to, twice a year, the Ohio, the Association of Municipal County Judges of Ohio has a conference. I go down there to take CLEs, learn additional stuff, and talk to other judges. The expenses of those are not coming out of the general fund there, instead coming out of special projects. But I also point out, and as noted here, there are no, we have the $0 capital requests. That's been the same for a number of years, and I would anticipate that that would remain in large part because of that special projects fund. And so if there were to be any capital improvements that the court would need, I would anticipate those coming out of that special project. The court also has a computerization fund, as that fund name also indicates. It's somewhat self-explanatory. It's for computerization. That is not, from my perspective, the day-to-day maintenance of our system. So the costs associated with the case management system is a general fund request. However, when we make improvements to that system, which we have done repeatedly over the last, the time that I've been here, those are oftentimes made out of the computerization fund. I will also note, however, that that fund is in a much better position than when I took office, in large part because we've been able to receive a number of grants, $200, nearly $200,000 from the, at the time, the Supreme Court's technology grant, got some ARPA funds as well. And so we've been able to reduce the funds we're using for computerization and general fund requests because of those, those grant options availability. So a couple of other quick points, generally speaking, not generally, throughout the time that I've been on the bench, and I would anticipate this year and going forward, that which we've requested, or that which, which we've actually spent has been less than we've requested. We've never had to come back to you and ask for more money. I don't anticipate, I think that we've done a nice job of putting ourselves in a comfortable position. But that, I think, is just an example of how the court is a steward of those public dollars. One thing to note, a couple, or a couple of other things to note finally in closing is that we've been about a year now with one additional staff member, which is that housing specialist. So any of you who have come to the housing docket, housing violation docket, or the eviction docket, you've seen her there, Holly Thomas. She's been an incredible asset to the court, and I think to the city. She, if you've ever been here and seen the event tables in the atrium, or the fresh produce that she's provided, that she's, that's, those are things in large part she's doing, and she's been a true asset to the court. And so I want to thank not only her, but I want to thank the city for approving the budget about a year and a half ago, years ago, I guess. These also include the cost of living increases, an anticipated cost of living increase for the following year. And also, we have already implemented the, there was the Archer study that was done, so we have made those changes to make sure that our staff is paid commensurate with what that study suggested. So this already takes that into account as well. With that, I'm happy, as I said, to answer any questions that you might have.
Judge Costello, thank you for being here this morning. I've sat in housing court quite often, as you know. I'm concerned about the courtroom, the conditions of the courtroom, especially the tiles and the ceiling. Is there any plan to do some upgrades on the courtrooms themselves, or what you might need in your chambers, or in your offices for staff?
So, and that's a great question, and it's something that I hope to be able to discuss with the next mayor, in terms of how, finding the balance in terms of what the city does to keep our spaces clean, vacuuming and cleaning bathrooms and things like that, to make sure that's happening. We also do, I would anticipate, we just started to freshen up some offices with some new paint and some backside that people generally don't see. I do anticipate that some, hopefully some painting and stuff happened potentially next year. But again, that, from my perspective, the painting, that type of painting work, I would anticipate coming out of, in large part out of the court's special projects fund rather than the general fund.
Okay.
But I look forward to cooperating with our, both the current mayor and our incoming mayor, in making sure that the day-to-day cleaning of that court happens a little better.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Cobb, again.
Judge, thanks for coming this morning. With respect to the Archer study and the salary increases that were in that study, did that adequately address your salary needs?
I believe it, I hope so. Again, I trust, I was impressed when the few times that I did meet with them, they seemed to take a fairly comprehensive look at what we were doing, took my suggestions in terms of what my staff members do, where some of those titles didn't all fully encompass what those, those staff members were doing. So we changed and tweaked some of the staff identifications to be a little more clear in terms of what, when people had more responsibilities, maybe than what their title was at the time indicating. It seems to me that, and I have those communications with other judges throughout Ohio, as well as locally here, to get a sense of where they are in terms of paying their employees. I hope that, and I, I hope that that adequately, has brought us to a point where we're paying people, well, they're not getting what they deserve, but they're getting close to it.
Thank you, and thank you, Judge, for giving us the overview that you did. I just went, just, I guess, for the public records, you know, went through some of the fund balances, both the Muni computerization and the Muni special projects amounts. And really, the deficit spending, it's not very much. It looks like you're really retaining your same balance, except for maybe $30,000. You know, the spending goes as it, as it should this year, which is, which is really great. It's nice to sort of see everything sort of on a nice even keel with your department. Yeah, it's great that your revenues, even though we really don't want to count them, but they do, that they, they cover your costs. I do have a concern, and this is just sort of more of a question, maybe not for this year, but as we sort of plan and move forward as a city, you know, President Larson mentioned, you know, sitting in housing court, and we do know that we have really quite a large number of deteriorating properties within our city. And, you know, I'd like to see us as a council when we sort of, you know, really work, you know, now that we're functioning as a city, we can, you know, move forward on initiatives. And I think one of them is an initiative to sort of increase the housing violation enforcement that we have, and how, you know, that would have to go through you eventually. I mean, how scalable it is, is if we were to, let's say, double or triple the amount of enforcement actions just through ordinances, so we can be a little bit tighter on trying to just really get people to fix things they're supposed to be fixing. Do you have the scalability to deal with that, or is that going to be additional cost?
Let me say this. So I hear all of those housing cases. There are some things, I have a number of part-time magistrates that, there are other cases, types of case hearings. That is one of those dockets that I believe, given the nature of it, that I should, I hope to continue that. I hope, so the choice in bringing cases is an executive decision. I leave that to the mayor. I have no say in what cases get brought before the court. The court will handle the cases that come before it in an efficient judicial. The practical route, yes, if there was a significant increase in those number of housing cases that were brought before the court, without question, that would make, we would need to make change. I would hope that there will be, and I anticipate, I don't have any reason to think otherwise, that there will be a communication in terms of how that's going to work. Again, without me putting any input in, in terms of the volume of cases. Whatever happens, happens. But I trust, and I have no doubt, that there can be that communication, and so that we can then be ready to handle those cases and continue to handle those in an efficient manner. It may, in fact, require some moving of staff and bringing, and potentially increase in And that, but that remains.
Okay, thank you.
Vice President Russell, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have one. How many court cases, I'm sorry, good morning, and how are you this morning, Judge Costello, and all my council members? What, how many cases do you think you will take on next year? That's one. And number two, I know you've had some issues far as the cleanliness of your courts. Have you thought about maybe having one janitor just for your area, the court's area, just to maintain the cleanliness and what you all need in that department?
Yeah, so on the first question, our numbers, I think we have roughly about 15,000 cases that get filed in the Cleveland Heights Municipal Board. It fluctuates. It went down certainly during COVID, as with every of the courts. We've seen, we've seen an increase. I don't have my annual report in front of me, but it lays out in terms of the number of cases that we see annually and breaks those up, and I'm happy to share that with you and make sure that you get that, that would lay that out in greater detail, both the total volume of cases and where those cases are coming from, in terms of traffic cases, criminal cases, broken up to some of those housing cases, as well as certainly all the other criminal cases that we hear and the civil. As to the second question, in terms of potentially having a staff member, quite frankly, we do, right now, I have staff members who are doing just that. My bailiffs have, listen, I've got an incredible staff, they're incredible people.
I know.
And I'm so lucky to have the staff that I do, and they step up whenever they need to. So I've got bailiffs whose job it is to make sure that the court is functioning, running through the, I've got, my dockets are coming, the people are getting called when they need to call, they maintain security. And on top of everything else, they wipe down tables and they vacuum. They shouldn't be doing that, but that's what they do. And I appreciate them doing that and taking those extra steps and making sure that, to the extent we can, we keep that place as clean as possible, as nice as possible. As I said, I hope, and I don't have any doubt, that I will be able to have a good conversation with the, with our incoming mayor and figure out where the balance needs to be in terms of what, again, what we're responsible for, what the city's responsible for, and make sure that when, listen, when someone walks into a court, no one wants to be in that court. I do weddings, people love to be there at the weddings. But every time somebody comes into the court, they don't necessarily want to be there. But it should be a space where, and I think that we need to think about this, it should be a space with some sort of, you know, to the extent that it can, with some calming ability. So that's from the colors that you pick on the walls, to the carpet, to the flooring, to everything else, I think that we have to think about that, and certainly having a space that is clean and that the tiles are, you know, that you don't have dirty-looking tiles. I think that makes a difference when people come in in terms of how they behave and what they see happening in that court. And so I think that's important, and it's a conversation that I, that I look forward to having.
Yeah, I also think the cleanliness and a appealing workplace environment helps workers do their job even better as well. But I just want you maybe to consider maybe hiring, or putting someone, or having council give you additional funds to hire someone just to be a janitor in your area, because I know the city is rather large, the buildings are rather large, and whoever's the janitor right now is probably having a lot on their hands. But to be able to, just to concentrate on your department, since your staff is outstanding, and I will agree with that, but I don't, me personally, I don't think that's part of what they should be doing, of cleaning, when we can actually get you someone to do that job on a consistent basis. So if you would consider that, that would be appreciative.
Yeah, that's true.
That was the last question I had. Thank you.
Yeah, all of our, I, I'm sure you all got it in my email when I sent it out and read through it thoroughly, but maybe it, but, no, but it is, they are also going back a number of years, but certainly the most recent as well is all, they're all available from the court's website to anyone to take a look.
That's really important data that you produced, though. I mean, it is.
You know that, I can say, for the record, I can say that Councilwoman Larson, I know that she's asked me some questions about it, so she's at least made it to page five or six of the, of it, so.
My best effort. Mirakuda.
Yeah, just as far as the cleaning staff goes, we haven't had anybody for the last three weeks, and before that, let me just say, it was a little spotty. So Kayden started today. I don't know if everybody's, I would imagine maybe nobody's met him yet, because today is his first day, and it's the morning. But I did meet him. And Tom Fadanza has given him some orientation. We might want to think about doing that as well, administrator, because, you know, that has been a problem, you know. But I just want you to know that at least we have somebody today that we haven't had in the past few weeks. And, you know, let's see if that one person is enough to cover both sides of the city hall, and then we'll go from there.
And I assume that person's full-time, right? Okay.
President.
Vice President Russell.
Was I, I was just not clear, that Mirakuda says that it was only one person who was cleaning the whole building, as well as the courts?
That's correct, but there was nobody the last three weeks.
No, I understand. I think maybe one person is not quite enough. I guess maybe that's what I'm saying. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Judge Costello? Okay. Thank you so much, sir, for coming and spending some time with us this morning. So our next speaker or department representative is the Police Department and Chief Ritten. Addy's going to check on his availability.
Thanks, Judge. I'll be.
And also, for your reference, counselors, it's page 70 for the Police Department.
President Larson, can I go a little off-topic, but still regarding the budget?
Sure.
Where the police chief arrives?
Sure.
Can I call everybody's attention to page 23? So I just kind of like call attention and ask a question of our finance department that I don't expect to get answered tonight, but, or today, but if it could be answered, maybe in our finance.
You said page 23?
23. The fund balance summary. It's the last page of the listing of all fund balances.
Okay.
It gives us a projected fund balance at the, essentially, the end of this year.
Okay.
And then a projected ending at the end of December.
Sure.
Of 2026. We had some issues in our budget. I don't want to go into, I don't want to belabor it, but, you know, it was very difficult to pin down the administration last year, to get really how much money we were going to have in the bank, a projected amount of money that we'd have in the bank at the end of this, this December.
Okay.
And it was projected at 65.5 million, approximately. You maybe don't have the budget numbers.
Is that all funds?
All funds. You know, I kind of, we co, and when I look at this information, I really spend more time looking at all funds versus the general fund, because that's really where the entirety of the leftover monies that we have, because we've, we use a lot of funds, but that's just how I look at it, and that's how I'm looking at it in this conversation right now. But essentially, the budget that we passed last year, if we did everything perfectly, we'd have 65.5 million available.
Okay.
And what I see in this is we have 71 million point three available at the end of this year, essentially as of January 1st. So we, in effect, have essentially 6 million more than what we thought. We didn't spend $6 million last year.
Or the revenues come in better. You know, we always have to be conservative, you know, so we're going to be very conservative with our revenues and our expenses. So it's possible, you know, most likely, we receive more revenues, and we're spending less as well.
Exactly. Well, I guess the point is, we have about, in my opinion, about 6 million more to spend, or not spend, but we have 6 more, we have 6 million additional monies in the bank based on our budget last year than, that we have. So we didn't spend as much as we thought we'd spend, which is good, or we are right, or we got more revenues.
Right.
But it's like, we're 6 million ahead this year. That doesn't mean we have to spend it, but, you know, it's probably good to bank it, it's probably good to look at our reserve policy. It looks like we are going to be going into some deficit spending. You know, what I'm saying is our expenses are going to be more than our revenues, it gives us a little bit more cushion. But it really was something that is important to me, and I hope for the members of our, the other members of our council. And I just kind of want to confirm, am I right to assume, assuming that these are still projections, we'll have roughly 6 million more in the bank than we thought?
I agree with that, and again, we're conservative, you know, and I'm sure they were conservative last year, too. So, and we are planning to set aside some monies in a budget stabilization fund at the end of 2025 for like a rainy day as well.
Good. Okay. That's really all I had to say.
Welcome to you both, and we're ready to have you begin, so.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Just trying to get this to it, thank you. Okay. Now we're going to go over the Police Department for 2026. The total budgeted personnel services is going to be approximately $15 million for the Police Department in 2026. There's an increase, but that's due to contractually obligated raises, hospitalization, and workers' comp. The operating expenses are going down. The police do a great job in really monitoring their expenses and cutting wherever they can. They're going to be approximately $2.3 million, which is down $300,000 from 2025. So thank you, gentlemen, we really appreciate it, anytime you could cut operating costs. Capital is going to be approximately $500,000 for 2026, and their, police's total budget is going to be approximately $18 million. There are 104 full-time employees. I believe there are some vacancies in '25, but we are budgeting to fill those spots in 2026. Any questions on this? And then we'll go over their capital after this.
If I may, reading the narrative on page 71, the 2025 accomplishments that you listed, it talked about continued staffing of business district beat officers as a 2025 accomplishment. Have you been able to successfully staff those districts the way that you would like to have them staffed?
We're still on the right track, ma'am. Over the course of this past year, made it, made it a goal priority, got the night traffic unit up and running, but as far as day goes, there are officers that are specifically assigned to the business districts, Cedar Fairmount, they split up the time between there, Coventry, Taylor Road, and Lee Road. Then at night, kind of the similar thing, they're directed, not a historical beat officer that we used to have, but they are directed patrols to those areas.
So there's assignments that happen because we are aware that those business districts need that coverage, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. And one more question on the 2025 accomplishments. You purchased those used police motorcycles, which they look beautiful. I've seen them on the street, and so they're very, in excellent condition, right? And I'm just curious, will you be using those year-round, or will you, in the wintertime, not?
Ma'am, as of last Friday, they were still riding the motorcycles. So yes, the group is highly motivated. They love the detail assignment, and they were out there in the rain and the cold doing work.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
All right, I guess, carry on. Counselor Posh.
What's, I have one after them.
Sure.
In your narrative, I assume you're going to be talking about some of the capital stuff, but can we go in, can, can you share a little bit, and not necessarily now, if you have it, but how are we are with the jail facility? There seem to be things that we had to make investments in in the jail. The general police house. The general police house, lockers, how is all that working out? Kitchens, anything that we can do to make our staff, you know, come to work and feel more appreciated, a workout facility, you know, what are things that we can do in that? And I'd also love some clarity on the number of vehicles that you wanted to purchase. Is it five, or is it 10?
So yes, I'll start with the jail. So about a month ago, the new jail modules were put in, so including the jail doors and the intercom system. There's still a couple tweaks, if you will, being worked out, but it's up and running functionally, which has drastically not only improved the safety for the officers, but for the inmates, for the operations of the jail. As I'm here today, Panzeca, they were here Friday, they're actively working on the renovations for the locker room, so again, thank you all for that. So we're underway while they're finally. The, yeah, the police cars, it was our plan, based on previous discussions, to work on our fleet, if you will, and working with the mayor and our staff. We thought a good number at five to continue on with that was for five police cruisers.
So I think there's a question in my mind, we're going to talk about capital, but the 2026 goal was to purchase 10, and then over on page 72, it lists five for $335,000. So is that five, including uplifting, to make sure they have all the equipment they need?
Yeah, we were hopeful for 10, but, you know, understanding, you know, the goals, goals of the city and the budget. We felt that five with the upfitting would be good for us.
Okay. Vice President Russell.
Yes, I have a question regarding, how many police officers do we have right now compared to how many we should have? And then second, to follow up on, I believe that was Councilman's Posh, question about beat cops. I heard you mention every Business District except the Noble and Taylor Business District. Is there no beat cops there because there are no businesses there? Or will there be a, something that will add a little bit more police presence there? You know, we have heard about residents wanting to have more of a relationship with the Police Department far as doing something in those two Business Districts as well?
Yes, ma'am, thanks for clarifying that. To correct what I said to add on it, there is a new, we just hired a new officer, she's on the night traffic, and she's specifically assigned to Noble Road, so her primary route is the Noble Road Business District, all the way down to the city's border. As far as staffing, as we've discussed over the years, has been a challenge. It's not just exclusive to Cleveland Heights, but as I stand here now, even though we've hired a handful of officers, as I sit here now, we're down five civil service PO spots and two BPO spots. But next month, we're losing an officer for retirement, and another officer for other reasons. So we're still down a good number of officers, and we still strive and continue to fill those spots.
So, well, you have a, I understood you said that you would have a police officer at night during the Noble area. What about during the day as the other Business District? And I didn't hear you mention Taylor.
Yeah, during the day, there is an officer on Taylor, an officer assigned to the West End, so they split up their time with targeted patrols to all the Business Districts and to include Noble Road.
Okay, and I guess this will be my last question. What neighborhoods will receive more of the cameras? Or when will more cameras go up, or have they started to go up already?
Yeah, as Director Unitek said, part of our capital request is for additional cameras in the Noble Road Business Corridor to include Noble Monticello, Noble Warrensville Intersection for the impound house, and down at Noble Grayton, if I remember correctly. And those are, if I remember correctly, I think they're happening soon. I know they were working with First Energy to get pole rights and so forth, to get that equipment installed.
What about the Coventry area? I've heard a lot of complaints of a lot of lording over in the Coventry area, people sleeping on benches, and also going into different businesses there. Do you have any idea what you're going to do in that area as well, far as cameras, to make sure those businesses who are operating are safe, and the residents who are walking that area?
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, I know Coventry is part of the camera upgrade system, and we've recently, you know, with our staff in particular directing, you know, those targeted patrols and being visible to discourage the soliciting, solicitors, and that type of activity in the Business Districts.
I truly respect and admire the Police Department, but I really would like to make sure that within our city, we have a police presence that is friendly, so that our residents get a chance to know the police officers, well, the way they will come to them, not only in a situation of need, but in a situation of friendliness, and I would really like to see a lot more of that in the Noble area, Taylor area, and Coventry area as possible. So thank you.
Mayor Kuta?
Yeah, with regard to surveillance cameras, I have met with the Chief, RIT Director Ryan Prosser, and the liaison from First Energy, David Conley, and I did ask, just so you know, right now, there are no surveillance cameras in our Business Districts, period. That is what's been left out. There's a couple in the parks, there's a couple parks that still need surveillance cameras, and there are some surveillance cameras that have been installed within buildings. But as far as outside, we haven't done anything. I have asked, and I would say directed, the entities involved to get the surveillance cameras up by the end of the year. I was told by First Energy that they would strive to do that. I know it's only seven weeks away, but they said they can work in weather that's, you know, somewhat inclement. So that is our goal, so I'm going to keep trying to hold them to it.
Thank you, that would be good news, if we can get that done. Counselor Posh.
I'm not sure this is a police issue, but written in the narrative, it says that you need to upgrade some of your desktops to Windows 11, assuming that you're probably running Windows 10 on those machines. I know this is an IT thing, and I'd like to bring this forward to the IT director, and maybe someone could get with them before we meet with them. But Windows 10 is end of life, and it's a security problem if we have any computers in this city running Windows 10. That's got to be, you know, I would, I know there's a lot of priorities, but that's a big one when it comes to, you know, security and, you know, maintaining cybersecurity. I would think especially in the Police Department, where you're dealing with a lot of sensitive items. But again, I don't think that's, you know, my concern is not directed at the Police Department, and that, I think it's more city-wide. There's also, on the last goal, you talk about data collection, using speed sign data and citizen input for traffic calming. The prior administration basically stopped all that work, to a point where it used to be you can petition if you wanted some traffic calming in a particular area. He was very, very specific in saying that, oh, we're not doing that anymore, we're going to use this big data system and look at cell phone data, and we'll be able to proactively figure out the areas that need traffic calming. With this last goal, and we can take this up in our Safety Committee if it's, this is sort of on the fringe of maybe a Safety Committee issue versus a budget issue, so we can take it up in the Safety Committee. But are really, are we rethinking that from the police perspective? And again, I'm happy to deal with this in the Safety Committee and not at this point.
Yeah, we can talk further at the Traffic Safety Committee, but yeah, Councilmember Posh, yeah, we do have some equipment available. We used on occasion over the summer, but yes, it's in my initiatives to resume using that equipment for this particular use.
Do we need more monies for that? I mean, I think these are pole-based radar systems. I've seen, for example, a new one, I believe on North Park, is it? That went up, which looks a little bit more permanent.
That, I don't believe that's ours. Yeah, that one's not ours, but we do have, we have a handful of the pole-mounted ones, and we do have three trailer mobility radar devices for use. So it's not necessarily, I guess, directing where we're going to put those and for what purpose, and in our collection data objectives.
So when we sort of look at, you know, the budget as being a roadmap per se, I would love to find more city money for more of those devices. They seem to be, you know, the things that you put on poles, I believe are effective. I believe they're probably pretty cost-effective. I mean, if there's something that we can use at like a low price, I'd be willing to make sure that we have monies available for you, or any other item that you think when it comes to traffic safety.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple more, oh, go ahead, Counselor.
Actually, more than a couple first. And I may have missed it, did we get, and I'm not sure if this is the correct term, an expense budget worksheet for any of the departments that gives us a breakdown specifically of the expenses comprising their budget?
No, we didn't. In the legislation, it'll break it down by fund and function, but we have not provided that yet.
Would we be able to get that? And I don't, it's a lot of pages, but is that something that we could easily run off and provide us a copy of? Because then it really gives us details as to all of the items comprising the budget, not just for the police, but for all of the departments.
Yes, well, you definitely get it before the Council meeting on, was it November 17th, but we'll try to get it to you as soon as we can.
Okay. And then, Chief, I know this year we had some street closures. It's been my belief that when we have these street closures in connection with events that the various Cids are holding, that that should be an expense borne by the city. Have you budgeted for next year anticipating events like that? So for example, when we close Lee Road for the Halloween Candy Crawl, we closed it for the race, those type of events, do you have any of those budgeted for next year?
The, yes, there's money allotted for the overtime, been pretty, if it's not a city-sponsored event, it's usually the specific Sid that's responsible for paying for, like the Halloween, it wasn't a city, it was an event hosted by Obama, so I made them pay for it.
I don't need the number right now, but could you give me some estimate of what it costs for us to provide the staffing for those events? And maybe I misspoke when it's a city-sponsored event, but it benefits, to me, it benefits the city in a tremendous way that you really can't put a dollar amount on. So I just offhand would like to know those expenses going forward. And I'll just speak for myself, understanding that if you go over your budget on overtime, it would be because we were having events like that. And speaking of overtime, do you know offhand where we're going to be on overtime for this year?
I don't have the number directly in my head, but the significant, as you know, we had that, the fire, which caused a substantial amount of overtime for the city. I don't, hopefully, we won't experience something like that this year. But I, I guess I don't have the exact number.
Okay. Police Academy, are we still running that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's going well.
And if we could get some dollar amounts on what that Police Academy is running us versus the revenue that we collect from the tuition. I know at one time, we used to provide police officers a low-interest loan if they were buying a house in Cleveland Heights. Are we, do we still have a program like that?
I haven't been familiar with a program like that in many years.
Do you think it would help our recruitment if we had a program where we provided officers a low-interest loan if they were to buy in Cleveland Heights? It was, and I can't remember, I think it was like $10,000 assistance, and then if they remain with the force, do you remember that at all, Lieutenant? This is going back a ways.
Yeah, they did have, they did have that program, and I think it was more inclined with, because we, our officers had to live in the city, so there was a financial incentive there. I think it was, like you said, $10,000, and then they'd had to remain on the force for five years for it to be forgiven.
Yeah.
And yes, that program, it's been many years since that has been in effect. There may be federal programs that I'm not aware of, but not anything local anymore.
I mean, I'm just trying to think of anything that we can do to aid recruitment, to bring officers into the city, and particularly also to get them to live within the city. As to our Police Academy, are we offering any tuition refunds to anyone that comes out of the Police Academy that stays with the city?
So actually, we have five, or there might be six, six cadets in the academy right now, but the previous mayor administration, even when Chief Annett was here, were able to put them on the books, if you will. So we hire them in anticipation that we'd be promoted, so they don't actually have to pay for the tuition.
All right, that's all I had. Thanks, Chief.
Backtracking on a couple of questions, so forgive me. When will all the Crown Vics be gone, in terms of your cruisers?
That's a good question. Still have Lieutenant Corrigan, and his efforts has a worksheet here put together. Is this the number here, on this top one?
Yeah.
So as of now, we still have approximately 10 cruisers that are 16 to 20 years old. That would include some of the Crown Victorias, so I think probably in another year or two, we'll be able to totally take them all out of service.
Stay on this strategy, strategic plan of replacement?
Yes.
We can get there?
Yes.
And then we start all over again, right?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. I have to ask this question, because Mayor Kuta and I have been interested in it for a long time. Precinct III Building, is there any plan for doing anything there? On Noble Road?
Yes, of Mayor Kuta, we've had conversations over the, I don't know, years about potentially restrategizing the use for it. We use it now for a multiple order of things to include, you know, even more particularly when the dairy closed, so a lot of our specialized equipment was in that building, so we had to move a lot of stuff there, but that building's used daily. We have our bomb unit down there. We have our bomb unit down there, accident investigation unit down there. We use it for, we have a car that needs to be processed, if you will, for evidence collection. We use that building for that. The lifts in there are still functional, and we use it for emergency repairs or upgrades. And so it is used daily. Officers are in and out of there for a variety of reasons.
Are there repairs that need to be done or updates that need to be done in that building to make it more comfortable for the staff that do use it?
There, there does need some work that needs to be done.
Okay. Okay. What about Mayor Kuta?
Yeah, I have a, I want to follow up on something Councilman Cobb said, and then I do have a question for the chief. As far as street closures, and, you know, first of all, the mayor-elect probably needs to decide if we, if we're cosponsoring an event, if that counts as sponsoring an event. I mean, we do co-sponsor some of these events. I don't know what counts, but I think we, we should take that into consideration. Secondly, I think council, and I say this as councilman-elect or re-elect or whatever that is, you know, we need to decide as a council what, what kind of information we need back from the, these event planners, whether it's Obama or what have you. Because if we get back from them and they use some of the money that we gave them for the Candy Crawl for security, and they were still able to put on, you know, the after-party, I suppose then we could look at that as well. That was in their budget. But when we don't follow up and get a kind of report out, and this goes for the music hop and everything else we pitch in, you know, so that's, that's something we need to follow up on. So there's no real answer to that, but I think there's information we could look at that could lead us to an answer. As far as the cruisers go, Chief, we may have talked about this in private, I don't remember, but considering that you're ordering five cars this year, five hybrids, if we look at the fleet as a whole, if we ordered five a year, would that keep us, you know, in the right, on the right path?
I, I think it would be, it would be close, Mayor. I think it would be close. I think, you know, in talking with Director Bo Tang, you know, about energy saving and costs, you know, keep, keeping them on the road, I think a more realistic or beneficial number would be, you know, around seven, I think would be more ideal, you know, but again, we understand, you know, the, the budget and other objectives of the city and so, long answer short.
I think, you know, I mean, Councilman Posh has brought this up several times, that we do need a long-range capital plan, and, and, you know, certainly that would include for the cruisers. Thank you.
One more question. The first call program, do we share some, the social workers with another city municipality or do we have someone who is strictly employed by us to be on call when needed in a situation where somebody's having a mental illness break?
Yeah, that's an excellent question, ma'am. So we have our own, we have two designated social workers assigned to Cleveland Heights from the first call program, but that doesn't mean they could be called to another city, even though they're assigned to us. But yes, in the event of, of emergency, we do have contact information. We can call them for a response.
Right, and, and is that program working the way that it was designed to work as far as you're concerned?
Oh, absolutely. It's been, it's been fantastic. I, I can, we just had a recent meeting, and I'll be happy to share those numbers with you for calls for service and referrals. Obviously, it would be ideal to have social workers on duty 24/7, but obviously, it's not realistic at this point.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions from my colleagues?
Yes.
Vice President Russell?
Yes, I would like to pose this question to Mayor Let Petras, just to follow up on Councilman Cobb's, I guess, information. I would really love it if you could establish some type of program for the police officers that lived in Cleveland Heights. I know we have, we established the gap funding back some years ago when Astor Hicks were building those 33 homes, and we added upper monies to those, to that fund. So, and I've said publicly that I thought it was a shame that the state stopped police officers from living in their communities, but I think it would help with some of the morale, what the residents have been talking about regarding being able to have a friendly relationship with the police officers. I think it would, it'd be vital in our community and the age we live in now to be able to offer some incentives or a program that will incentivize police officers who would live in the community.
Good. I, I totally agree with that, and I would like to look at making such a program available, actually for all staff, something similar to what they have in university circle. There are a number of institutions like Case Western and the Cleveland Clinic that are trying to incentivize their employees to live in the greater university circle area, and I'd love to have a program like that here in Cleveland Heights for our city staff.
Yes, I think it would work and actually bring in more tax dollars as well. So thank you for considering something like that, especially with our police and the Noble and Taylor area who are looking to have more of a relationship with the police on a positive note.
Looking at my colleagues and Vice President Russell, Mayor Kuta, any other comments? Thank you so much for both of you being here today. I appreciate your time.
Thank you all. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
You might want to recess for about 15 minutes because we're waiting on Chief Harry.
Okay, that'd be great.
Do you want to go ahead and say that you're going to recess?
We're going to go into recess mode until we have the very last presentation today. So about 15 minutes, thank you. Our recess is over, and we have the Cleveland Heights Fire Department represented at the table this morning. I would like to remind everybody that the section that we're talking about is the Fire Department. Department overview starts on page 74 of the budget book, and we will be, Chief, in, when we have questions that arise, we're just going to ask them at that point that they arise rather than waiting until the end. So it's all yours.
Okay, so for the fire, the personal services for 2026, we are requesting approximately $14 million for the personal services. This has gone up from 2025, again, because of wage increases and hospitalization cost increases. Their operating expenses is going to be approximately $1.1 million. These costs are going up, the replacement uniform costs are going up, the outstanding maintenance costs are going up, and their billing services are going up. That's just overview of some of the bigger ones that are going up in their operating expenses. And then for their total capital request for 2026, fires requesting $243,000, and fire is here to answer any questions.
I do have just a quick question regarding the figures that you just spoke about. On page 76, the capital request is for $454,986, and then on the following page, it's a total of 243, $243,000, so.
I, you're right. I, I think the one on 76 is incorrect, but we will definitely look into that and get back to you.
Because it looks like something's missing, possibly? Are, are all the items there?
Yeah, I think these are all the correct items. Let me look into the 454. I think something might have rolled up in there that shouldn't be there.
All right, thank you. You have anything that you would like to say, Chief Harry, or?
No, I thank everybody for having us be a big part of the process, and this will go a long way towards making the vision hit the streets for the people and the department and the residents.
We, we were just having this conversation before you arrived, and I'd like to reiterate it. The, one, the last goal in 2026 is for efforts to be focused towards systems and supplies for station infrastructure repairs and updates. Can, do you have some specifics on how you're going to improve the, the stations that our firefighters spend so much time in?
Yes, so in the history of the department, we had not been responsible for major projects for the buildings. As that's evolved over the years, I put in some requests for things that were needed. The capital improvements is, we have a water manifold that comes into Fire Station 2. That's, it comes in from the water main. There's a pressure reducer and some valves and gauges, and distributes water to the rest of the station. That's badly degraded. That's a ballpark figure for us to get the, get a company in to replace all that. It's, it's in bad shape. Our emergency generator needs to be replaced. We had $75,000 in there for that. We would like to have that put outside and on a concrete pad. Those are two of the big ones. Now that we have good roofs over the fire stations and the kitchens are being addressed, we're, we'll just keep going this, you know, keeping things moving throughout the years as they come up.
I do have, on your capital request list on page 77, it lists one fire vehicle, and then in your narrative, it listed two. So I'm just curious, is it one or two that you're looking for?
It's one.
Okay, so one. And then, we are excited about the kitchens being updated. Question for you is, that money that's budgeted in 70, or excuse me, in 2025, $75,000 for each kitchen, should be available to pay what's, pay for what's happening right now? So will that be encumbered and make sure that's encumbered for 2026?
Yes, I'm told that we're, we don't do budget rollovers.
Right.
We can set that money aside and use it. We, I just submitted the contract for the designs. That was $26,000 change, because it's 13-ish each design.
Okay.
And then we'll speak later about keeping that in an account earmarked.
I don't want to lose track of it.
Don't want to lose it.
No, don't want to lose track of it. We've come too far. And so do you have a contingency fund in case you need to spend more than the amount allocated, encumbered? Like if something comes up?
Yeah, we do not. So as it was explained to me, the, that money will stay there. Panzeka Construction will have their engineers do the designs, one for each building, and then they'll come up with a materials list, they'll come back to us, you know, talk about what we can do, and, and then bring that back to the, to the company.
Okay.
Yeah, and then they're going to, they're going to do all the bid process and everything.
Okay, great.
And then, then it would come back, and council would approve the work.
All right, thank you so much. Anybody? Vice President Russell?
Yes. Can you tell me, good morning, I guess it's still morning. Can you tell me, are we still losing medics, losing trained medics to other cities? And if so, what is the pay gap?
Well, we have only had, is it one this year? Two? Two? We lost one for, to another department and another for, was it the first poison? Yeah. With the new contract that went into effect, we're a lot closer to where, where all the other departments are, so I don't see that as a major concern, as long as we keep going in the right direction.
Oh, great. Great, okay. I think that's it for me right now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Posh?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
It's really great to sit down with you and look at a good budget and seeing where you guys are at. The, the generator, that's the one, that's the one in Mayfield, on the May, the Mayfield?
Fire Station 2 on Cedar.
On Cedar? I thought the Mayfield one had a problem with the generator, or was that being taken care of with the La Parro project?
No, the Fire Station 1 generator was replaced a few years ago.
Less than 10 years.
Yeah, and it, it was faltered. It was the same exact unit. You know, the stations were built within a year of each other, and they were the same units. They were great units that lasted a long time. That one was replaced. This one at Station 2 that we're asking to replace, it did fail when called upon twice in the last three years. Once when the neighborhood lost power for about three days, two, two and a half, three days. They did, we have great mechanics, they got it back up and running. Unfortunately, they stopped making parts for these things. So onward and upward into the future.
Yep, certainly seems like a valid needed expense. One of the local, one of our local communities, a neighboring community, and keep in mind, we as, I'm a newer council member, and, you know, we've never, I've never had the opportunity to walk through your facilities or kind of see, or see what they're like, and I'd love that opportunity, and I would love possibly to have our safety committee have a meeting in one of your facilities at, at, at some point, you know, depending on all the technology. So I'm a little naive when I ask some, some questions that maybe other, my other, my other peers know. But one of our neighboring communities is working on rehabilitation of one of their fire stations and considering having, you know, basically two sex areas. So you have a male portion where you have sleeping quarters for males, and you have a sleeping quarters for, for females. Do we have that already in, in any of our firehouses? Is it something that's needed or something we should be thinking about down the line?
Yes and no. We have, we have had females over the year, some have come and retired, others have moved on to another place. We have one currently now, again. We do have female restroom facility and locker room
Okay.
On the second floor of Station 2. The female does have to, have to sleep in the main quarters, sleeping quarters, which is not a concern, they are kind of private. At Station 2, we actually do have another dorm room set aside for that, so. I suppose that is something we would have to look to the future on, you know, if we were to expand our pool of female firefighters. And as we move forward, if there's going to be a major reconstruction, that would certainly have to be part of the decision-making process.
Okay, but apparently it's not something we really need to be worrying about right now.
Not at the moment.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
I could, in response to Councilman Posh's comment, I too have not visited many of our city facilities, and so I'm going to request that all council members, we provide the opportunity to go across all of our facilities so that we're aware of what we're funding.
Counselor Cobb?
Just to follow up on what the council member said, when I came on council in 2019, I got to spend a shift at Station 1.
Did you have fun?
I did have fun. And, and got fed a good meal as well. But it was eye-opening then, what the kitchens looked like, what the doors falling off, and I'm glad that we're finally going to get the kitchen done. I also noticed back in 2019 that, that the furniture was in pretty bad shape. How old is that furniture in the stations, and could it need a refresh?
Furniture?
That was in the, that was in the living area where the, I was in Station 1 where the, where the TV was, a big oversized sofas, they were beat back then.
Yeah, we, every few years, we replaced those. When was the last time those were done? Been a minute, probably.
It's probably coming close.
Yeah.
In the next year or two.
Because I, I don't recall us ever approving any capital expenditures for the replacement of furniture.
No.
Somewhere between 2015 and 2018 is, I think, when we got...
Okay. Can you...
Probably about due. We're getting there.
All right. If we have any money left over, maybe if you could take a look at that and get back to us. What kind of condition are the kitchen appliances in? The stoves, the refrigerators?
The refrigerators are very new. We also have a new ice machine, pardon me, ice machine slash water dispenser. That's new. When we do redo the kitchens, Mayor Sarin had said that he was going to set some money from a, a grant from, I don't know if it was First Energy or something.
Nope, that probably.
It might have been. For a new oven, stove, griddle. That's something, you know, that, that could be done afterwards when the kitchen's done. Or when both kitchens are done. Station 2 also got the same new refrigerators, water dispenser, ice machine. The stove, oven, griddle is about the same age and I think it's, might even be the same model. You know, something we can address after the kitchens are done. Probably should, but they're, they're in working order.
And do you know offhand what our overtime expense was for that Cedar Lee Meadowbrook fire?
I had asked, um, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to run the numbers. I had asked if we were able to get in on that remuneration that was going on with the police department. Not sure. Ultimately, in the grander scheme of things, not, not that much. You know, most of it was shift over, shift staffing present for us. There were a few.
And then, and then the total spend on overtime this year? Do we have that number available?
For the year...
For the year that's ending, are we close to what we had estimated for that?
Yeah, we're pretty close.
Okay. That was it. Thanks.
You're welcome. Vice President Russell, do you have any more questions?
Uh, no questions, just a comment. Chief, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you and Fire Department as well as the medics for all of you've done for the last two years with my family and coming to our rescues for many different illnesses. And I didn't get a chance to thank the police as well, but I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you and your department for what you all have done for the, over the last two years with a lot of health issues within, within my family and being there quickly and respectfully and just right on target. So I want to personally thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am. It's our honor.
Mayor Kuta, do you have anything you want to address? My colleagues, looking right, looking left. All right. Thank you so very much for being here today. I appreciate you.
Thanks, guys.
And unless there's anything that, Mr. Unetic, you want to contribute?
No, we're good.
All right. I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 11:31. Thank you so much.